Okay. Hi, it is January 18th and we are in the Nashua North Port from. This is a finance committee meeting and present we have, I'm here and Mr. Claffey?
Here.
And Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
And we also have Mr. Donovan, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Rodriguez. And okay, so the first thing on our agenda is we're looking for an upgrade to our phone system.
Yes, so this is my first committee meeting with three new faces. So hi, I'm Greg Rodriguez and Director of Technology. So eight years ago, we had our phone upgrades. So it's, we were a little past due. We were supposed to do this last summer, but we had a little thing with the ransomware and we had to push that off another year. So we're seeking to upgrade our phone system to Cisco Webex and it's going to be a cloud voice over IP phone system. So this is going to be a significant upgrade to our current phone system, which is based at all of our schools. And that equipment is all end of service, which means there's no support for it anymore. And that was end of service last year. So this, so we're going to be moving all of our, our phone systems to the cloud, like I said before. So the features they'll give us will be a soft phone capability, which is have, have the ability to make and receive calls from our cell phones on an app. We'll have redundancy with cell phones. And we're also going to have as part of this InformaCast, which is an emergency management system. And the total price for the first year is $188,101.04. And this isn't necessarily a, I don't know how to explain it. We couldn't put this out to bid because it's, it's with our current contract with Cisco and Inter Systems. So it was more of an upgrade to our current contract right now. So that's, and we're going to be going with Inter Systems to do the implementation for this.
What is, what is the current contract with Cisco? How long does that last for?
It's another three years, I believe.
All right, do you guys have any questions? Okay, all right, this, oh, can you talk a little bit about this, about the cellphone? You said that you can, you guys can make calls from your cell phones to?
Yep, so it'll be added an option to everybody. So what this will do, it's, there's a Webex app that will have, that you have the ability to download and, and you'll have, it's called a soft client app. And you can actually make and receive calls like you're at your desk at your office. So right now, our backup phone lines are copper based, which is like the old school telephones, which is called POTS, plain old telephone service. So that's actually what it stands for. And those are, those lines are failing. So like we've seen like a regular telephone, like what we're used to when we grew up, those are, those are failing. And those are our backup lines at our school. With this, we can eliminate those lines, reduce our costs of the, out of the utility budget right then. Is that what that one?
Telephone budget.
Yeah, the telephone budget, because the system will now be backed up through cloud and cellular. So we're having a little bit of problems now with our old telephone service with the backup lines. They'll say if our phone system goes down now because of the failing telephone service. So the app on our phone will give us the capability to keep the same number and make and receive calls from our cell phones as we were at our desk. So it'll be like having this phone, you know, in our hands at all times.
And then we're also, we're purchasing 1100 regular phones as well?
Yep, yeah, so these phones are going to be going into all classrooms. So as of right now, we don't have classroom phones in all the classrooms. So we have some, we have in all the high schools and Hurst surprisingly, and I believe one of the middle schools right now. So all the, this'll, this'll be a definite enhancement for all, all, you know, classrooms and locations in the building.
Is that, now you say that's, they're going to improve the safety? Is that because of the phones in the classroom or will that be other?
Yeah, so it's going to increase safety. It helps us, you know, with 911 and that, and those capabilities too. Not that we can't dial out 911 now, but it'll be a much more streamlined service.
And I think also it'll consolidate our vendors for phones now. We have multiple vendors, so it's more invoices. It's difficult to track all of them. This way we'll have one vendor.
Yeah, call tower will be our, our phone provider. And Webex will be the, the service that provides the phone. So I, I don't know how else to describe that, but that's, that's how, it's like having an iPhone with AT&amp;T or whatever. So, but right, we're not eliminating all phone lines, because Mr. Smith's team still needs it to monitor like utilities and elevators. So that's, that's still going, we're still going to have some, but it's going to be a reduction in the telephone service that we have now for the district, which is, which is quite expensive. So this, this is actually going to be a cost savings.
The yearly fee is going to be, the years two and five would be $98,235?
Yes.
Do you guys know, can you tell that compares to what it is now for the service?
Well, the licensing is sort of the new cost.
Right.
The, the $49,647, we're paying more than that now to multiple vendors. We weren't able to pull all that together, but it's more, it's more than that. So in the telephone line, we should see a reduction.
Okay.
As I said, there's like four different vendors now and trying to get all that data together to figure out what the savings would be, just didn't have time to pull that together. But there will be a savings on that line. That's the telephone line.
Okay. Is there any chance you could have that for the, you know, so that you could quote the figure to the full board when we, when we go to the full board? Or is it something that just you really can't get a hold of?
I, I'll have it at budget time. How's that?
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Okay. All right, so any more questions, guys? Okay, so let me, let me make a motion. Can I make a motion to recommend to approve the five-year contract with Cisco for phone infrastructure upgrades in the amount of $188,101.04 for year one? And $98,232.52 annually for years two through five? Funding to come from $91.1.99222553628. And is there a quicker way to do that? Can I just say account?
Typically motions, when you're approving things, you're supposed to put the code, funding code, that's what that is.
Okay.
That's just the accounting code.
All right, so yeah, that's the, that's the code for the account.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And, okay, so I'm a yes. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And Ms. Daniels-Williams? All right, so that's motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're going to move on to discussion of the Stelo Stadium field upgrade and repairs.
It'd be me. Good evening. This project is primarily to replace the turf on the field. Stadium was built in 2001 and we replaced the turf at that point. The next point was in 2011. It was presumably had an eight-year life cycle and we got nine years out of it. We were told with this current turf that we'd have 12, 13 years. We're there now. There's a experiment, not experiment, but a test that's performed that Public Park and Rec pays for every year that measures the hardness of the surface. So if you, if you think of a turf, I don't know if you've ever been up close to one, but it's just a series of fibers, right? It looks like grass. And over time, those fibers will actually start to split. Also a rubber base inside of that compact, so that can be fluffed up. But the main thing, you know, the fibers just start to fail. And when that happens, when somebody hits the ground, it just gets harder and harder and harder. That's called a Gmax test and that's showing we have troubling areas on the field. I saw some statistic recently where 10% of concussions on the field come from impact of a helmet onto the ground. So obviously you want to use that. This does provide, the turf does provide a cushion underneath it, which we have not previously had. So that is part of the increase. So with your package, you got a spreadsheet, that's $650,000. That was my estimate from, based upon what we put in last time and then inflated. And turns out I was significantly under. Part of that though is the, is that pad that I'm talking about. We're at a pad underneath the, the grass base. So that's at 850. There's a couple of hard numbers. It's in the middle column. We've actually got quotes on those. Everything else is an estimate. And when you, I'm going to propose that you send this via the Board of Ed to the, to the Alderman. And the number we have here is a, just a starting point. Because when it goes to the Joint Special School Building Committee, they'll vet it, they'll put it through its process, they'll hire people to give them better numbers. That's why in the bottom of my memo, I didn't put down a, a number. I'm just recommending we send this project to the Alderman. In addition to the turf, they've, last time we did this, we actually did a lot of under drainage work, because we had a lot of puddles forming on the field. For the most part, that's worked, but there's still a couple troubling areas. Press box windows, the regular glass, but then there's like an accordion type, like you see at a press box, covering front of the press box windows. So we're looking to replace those, those are failing. Want to take down bushes that surround the field and put up fencing. Kids are out there, students are out there kicking balls, whatever gets behind these bushes, hard to get to. And also put it, actually putting a fence behind there would stop spectators from encroaching on the field. I put this down, really to replace the rubber membrane. It's about 20 years old. Typically rubber membranes, you get 30 years on. But I would want to have that assessed by a roofing professional. Partner Rec suggested we provide a better flooring for the locker rooms. Right now it's just bare concrete, painted, but it can get very slippery. Underneath the bleachers, they sit on top of, so underneath is a cavity between the bleachers and the locker room. Birds like to go in there and do their thing. So that's why we want to put some sort of cage material on either side to stop that. Lastly, the Partner Rec has suggested we did a new field grimmer. You mentioned before about the rubber granules, those just get puffed up every now and then. The machine they have now is all 20 years old, so it's, that's its service life. So all that, and I always have a contingency. It can vary anywhere from two and a half to 10% typically, depending on the age of the building, age of the facility. I have a little higher number, I think it's seven and a half, just because of the drainage. I'm not sure what that's going to cost. The funding sources, if this goes to the Alderman, then they will likely bond it. There's a Stellos Reserve Fund that in the past Bishop Gert has been paying into, $10,000, $15,000 a year. So we need to talk to them and see if they'll continue to do that. That could help to defray part of the cost. But luckily, we don't have to worry about that. We'll see that off to Joint Special and they'll discuss how to actually fund it.
This money is in the Stellos Reserve Fund, do you guys know?
$84,000, it's in the spreadsheet at the very bottom.
Oh, so $84,000, oh, okay, so that's, thank you.
And, and I believe the agreement with Bishop Gert, and there's still two or three years left of those payments.
So they use the stadium, but they don't, once we get to a certain point, then they won't pay us anymore to use the stadium?
No, we, we basically agree to a, we have an agreement with them. We'll say you're going to pay $12,000 a year for 10 years or something, and they just pay that.
Okay.
So they pay a percent of the cost of the field. They use it for football and lacrosse, for the most part.
Is it just the school district and, and Bishop Gert that use it? Does anybody else?
Youth groups, no adults. When the stadium was set up, there's, there's a rule on the books that no adults can use the stadium for, you know, men's soccer or things like that. But there are youth groups that use it for soccer and for football. Sunday mornings, I think the young, young boys play football there and.
I think football.
Football, yeah.
So we always have some money coming in from them as well, or?
Some of them pay, some don't. It depends on the structure. If they're Nashua students playing in the league and they're all, then we don't typically charge them. We would charge an outside group. For example, if you had a soccer tournament, let's say, in this, in the city and you use that field, then we'd charge a fee for that.
Is it, is it, are district, district workers that, district employees that care for Stellos, or does it have its own?
When it was constructed, the city leaders decided that Park and Rec would maintain it, because they, it's kind of a park, it's recreation. So they, they maintain it, they, they pay for all the upkeep of it. If there's anything major that has to take place, then we would probably get involved. They've come to me a couple of times asking for some funding.
Okay. Okay. All right, do you guys have any questions?
Well, I had a couple of questions. Does all this need to be done together? You presented it all together as in the, replacing the rubber membranes on the roof? You said that, that is good for 20 years, but we're at 11. Like, does all this have to be done together? Especially with the $200,000 increase?
I would say no.
Okay.
If I was to group it, I would say the, replacing the turf and the under drainage kind of go together. If that's all you wanted to do, that would take care of all the safety issues at least. Everything else could be done separately.
Is that something that they would usually, if the Board of Education votes to send it to JSSBC, they would be the ones who would decide what they wanted to do, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me, let me make a motion then. I'm going to make a motion to recommend, a recommendation to request funding from the Board of Aldermen to complete this project and to assign the project to the Joint Special School Building Committee.
A second motion?
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's, the motion passes three to zero. Thanks.
I guess I could add that I've discussed the project with Alderman Dowd, who chairs a joint special and also the city's budget chair and everything. So he knows this is coming.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I know. Mr. Dowd, he's good. He knows, he knows everything. He has his finger on the pulse. All right, let's see. Now, the next thing we're going to look at is the annual report of invoices over $10,000.
Okay, so back probably 10, 12 years ago, a certain Board of Ed member requested this and then it was put in the policy that once a year, this report be prepared and shared with the Board. Basically what this report is, is it takes a fiscal year worth of, of the invoices for, for this is for fiscal year '23, July 22 through June of '23. Print out any invoice that's over $10,000. And then I sort of summarize them, which is on the sheet that you have in front of you. And so I, I think what it does is it gives you a sense of, okay, the significant expenses that the district has incurred. And also, so I grouped them and I also then sort of tell you, give you a description of what it is, whether it was bid or not, and then whether a contract was approved by the Board of Ed. So I'll just sort of run through this. This is, you won't see this again for another year. But basically, the first part is utilities. As you're aware, there's supply and transmission. You can bid supply contracts, but you certainly can't bid transmission. So there are obviously significant expenses with Eversource and spraying. Those are for our gas and our electric providers. The transportation and rentals, first student is our, our bus vendor. I believe we have one more year, the 24, 25 year on that contract, and we'll be making a decision on what to do with it after that. As you can see, that's a fairly significant amount, because just about every one of the invoices we get from them is over $10,000. The other four items listed there are, well, actually Conway Arena is for the ice rental for the hockey. That's the, the only, that's the local rink that is used. And then the next three, Durham, Gentle Care, and Safe Wheels. Those are smaller vendors that support students that are either displaced or out of district students. So not a district student, we may have only one student going to a school in, let's say, Goffstown or Concord or somewhere in Massachusetts. So that's the cost of, of those. The next grouping is special education tuition. Now, the first item is the Adult Learning Center, sort of the Clearway School. The contract comes through every year through the Board of Ed. Basically, there's, we have two pieces to it. Part of it is for special education students and part of it is for the more, for the more typical students who like the smaller environment. And you'll see that cost later on in the report. The rest of these schools are all special education students that are out of district for one reason or another. This is not something that's approved by the Board. This is the IEP and the Special Education Department and student and the parents figure out what's right. As you can see, there's, there's some fairly significant costs. We spend typically over $7 million on out of district student tuition and there's typically about 90 students or so. So it's, it's not bid out per se. We, the student goes to the program that can fit the student's needs. Okay, supplies for, and services for plan operations, floor finishers, et cetera. There's a couple of, there's three of those items are HVAC maintenance contracts that were approved, that get approved by the Board. They're typically two to three-year contracts. Then there's a couple of other items, some library shelving and some locks for classrooms. And one other thing to note, I did try to put in here if, if the funding came from the grant. This report is high as it's ever been before. We have a lot of that Esser money. That is, at the end of this school year, that Esser money will be gone. But there was, there were a lot of either services or equipment purchase that were used with Esser funds. Books and supplies, exactly what it says. Most of these items, if they were a curriculum or if they were a series of textbooks, would have come through the Board through the Curriculum Committee. The way we, when I first started here, things would go to curriculum, then they come here to get approved. And so you'd take someone that knows all about the textbooks and then it would come to me and I'd try to explain textbooks that I don't know anything about. So we, we agreed that the, if there was purchases made that were brought up a Curriculum Committee, that committee would approve them and then they would move on to the full Board. So as you can see, a number of those items in there were purchased with some of the grant funding. Okay, services, this is where you'll see a lot of the grant funding and a lot of PD, a lot, and a lot of, and there's a number of those were, were grant funding things that you'll probably just see for one more year. The other thing to note, there are a few large items, like the fourth item now called Breakthrough, it's $273,000. Probably five or seven below that, there was Birch Behavioral, it was $532,000. There's another on the following page, Pro Care Therapy, $511,000. Most of those were paid for by the Esser grant, but it's, it's a situation that we're going to be dealing with going forward. We don't, we have a hard time finding all the staff we need, especially in the Special Education Department. So what we've been forced to do is use outside services to, to provide those services for the students. Typically, it's about twice as much to use an outside service as it is to use a internal staff. Now, if you put benefits in, it's maybe slightly less than that, but typically just a salary. If you're paying someone $50,000, it's probably going to cost you about $100,000 using an outside service. So this is going to be an ongoing issue. We're going to talk about it at the budget, you're going to have to be dealing with going forward, unless we can get enough of that, that type of staff in. So just highlighting that, because there are some large numbers in here and that's what those are. Couple of the other large numbers, Clark Associates and ABC Physical Therapy, those are the OTPT, those contracts come to this Board each year. Those people have been working with us for a number of years. And Boys and Girls Club, we have a couple of programs that we use Esser funds with them. And once again, we're going to have to make decisions in this budget. Do we want to try to keep that? Or we're going to deal with those services in another way. So that's the services, as you can see, that, that's higher than typical because of all the grant funding. Then the computer supplies and services. A lot of what this is, is software licenses. Software licenses go up every single year. If it's a software that we're purchasing, a brand new software, we'll typically bring it to the Board to get approval. You'll actually be, we're purchasing a new transportation software, routing software. So that'll be coming to the Board probably next month. So when it's new, we bring it forward. After that, it's just a software that we use year after year. So it's in the budget, you can see it in the budget book, but we don't bring it forward every year, because you just, you pay an annual subscription for it. So for example, that Follett software, which is $192,000, that's a student information system. You certainly don't change that out every year. So wherever you see annual software license, IT review, that's, that's what that was. The other large items in there are typically the purchases of computer hardware, which typically get approved by the Board in May slash June, and then they make the purchases in the summer. Okay, and then flipping over the page to equipment. There's, most of these items brought forward to the Board. There's a number of CTE purchases. Most of those were purchased with the Perkins Grant. There's some athletic equipment, and that's simply a, they buy a lot of it all at once, so the invoice itself is high, but the cost per unit isn't very high. Some of the, at the bottom, some of the desks and chairs, that was Title I funding that was used at the end of the year. We're hoping that the Title I funding is planned better, which I think it is now. But last year, there was a lot of extra money at the end and used to, to get some different sort of style of desks and chairs for students. Then there's conferences and sort of registration licenses. Paradigm, the second one, Cyber Ventures, that's the cost for the cyber program that we just started this year and is part of the CTE. And there's a people of other certification costs in there. Miss Lainis, Donors Choose, that's the $50,000 each year that we gift towards that program so teachers can put in requests and get matching amounts. Norway Savings Bank is the least that we have on our copiers. Food is food, obviously. Grace Fellowship Church, that was the final two payments on the Franklin Street School that we purchased. It was 1.8 million to purchase it. We had a payment plan, accelerated that payment plan to pay years three and four at the same time. So that's, building's all paid off. And then the YMCA of Great and Nashua, that is the summer programs, Power School Program and some other grant funded programs that we had with them. Okay, and then the last page, deferred maintenance. These are, are sort of the large projects that Mr. Smith does. Typically as part of the budget, we have a deferred maintenance line. It ranges from 100 to 600, excuse me, 700 sometimes. It's placed with other monies. But these are projects that are a little bit larger. For example, the first one to replace the sun trap, that had some serious issues before that was replaced. And then there's just a number of others. The Santa Life, that was Paula Johnson's favorite item there. We used extra money at the end of last year, you probably recall that. Nets for cleaning the air in the, in the classrooms. You have it, I think in about eight schools. And then a few other items, straightforward. And then the last group of things, I mean, other than one item, they're all items where we're paying for them. It's mostly the construction of the middle, the middle school construction class. It says JSSBC on the side, so these are all things that were approved at the JSSBC level. After that's done, then I approve them at the school level and we pay them. The one item that is, probably shouldn't be there, it should be up above, but it's the Capital One Public Funding. The one item is, probably shouldn't be there, it should be up above, but it's the Capital One Public Funding, the five hundred and fifty-four thousand. That is the lease payment we make to, for the improvements. We did energy improvements to two high schools. And we save, the way it works is you're guaranteed to save at least that amount of money each year. So we did have that firm come through, I think they were here in November or December, and they sort of showed the savings. So typically, we'll try to bring them back one year because the agreement with, with that company, it's called ESI. If, if we don't receive the savings, then they're supposed to come up difference. So if we only save four hundred versus four twenty, then they would come up twenty thousand. So as you can see, it's eighty-four million total. It's large because of the grants, it's also large because of the significant costs related to the middle school, which is, you know, bonded costs. All of this is certainly not from the operating budget. So that is in the report, any questions on that?
Do you have the figures for how much is actually operating budget?
With this, how much is operating budget? No, I don't have it broken out that way.
Yeah, it just, it just seems too overwhelming, the amount here. And I know that it's not really, doesn't really reflect the reality of what we're spending, so.
It's the total, but if you look at it, point of view, it's the total spend by the district, right? It includes bonds, it includes grants, and those, that's spending by the district. So the district did spend that much. Fifty-eight million is bonds, so that will be, you know, that's like a loan, right? You'll pay it off over time. The rest of that amount was spent and we got reimbursed by a grant for it, it's the operating budget.
Um, the, um, are, are, is someone working on seeing, like, how many grants we can get next year? Because, I mean, with the Esser funds running out, we're going to be in, in trouble. And I'm hoping that there's some grants out there for some of the stuff.
Well, the, the Esser Three Grant, which has been the last three years, that was twenty-nine million dollars. There's no grants out there at any, anywhere near that amount of money. Might we find a grant or two to help us run a certain program or something? Maybe. But the grant writer now that we used to share with the city works the time for the city. So not to say if we know of a grant that's out there, we could reach out to him. I'm sure he'd be happy to help us. But we don't have anyone that is, whose job is to write grants or find grants. If they're available and we find out about them, we'll put the resources together to try to get that grant, apply for. But there's no one sitting there looking around for them.
Well, that's unfortunate. I, I feel like that's a good way to get, to fund a lot of the stuff, at least partially. You said that the, um, for the special education tuition, it says like four million here, but you said it's usually around seven million. I wasn't sure why the difference.
Because this is just the ones that are, have an invoice over ten thousand. So if the invoice came in for the month for a certain student and it was eight thousand dollars, it wouldn't be on this list.
Okay.
So the, I think the whole idea behind the invoices over ten thousand was the individual at the time, he wanted to see a summary of the significant expenses the district had. So that's kind, that's exactly what this does.
Okay, um, all right, thank you.
Oh, um, this is July, um, twenty-twenty-two to June, twenty-twenty-three.
Correct.
How are we on track for this year? What does it look like for the ten thousand dollars invoices for this year?
I don't track ten thousand dollar invoices. I track budget lines, which, which we'll go over in a minute. So I sort of, that's what I sort of track on. It could be, there will, this year though, there will still be, it'll be somewhat like this year because the middle school spending is still, you know, for this current school year, it's still going to be very large. And the Esser Three Grant is still running through this year. So there'll probably be a few, a few less items in Esser Three. But I think in total, this number, it probably won't be eighty-four million. It'd probably be maybe seventy-eight million or so.
Alrighty, um, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the invoices over ten thousand dollar annual report and send it to the full Board.
Second.
So I'm a yes, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
And Ms. Daniels Williams?
Yes.
That passes, um, three zero. And then let's go over the financial report for December.
Okay, um, so each month, I'll run through a financial report for you. That's sort of required as part of the policy that the Board gets this information. There are two reports that we supply you each month. One of them is a monthly report where it shows the expenses by month. The other one shows sort of what the, the budget is, what was expended for the month and year to date. I typically go through each month, the, the month by one, month one, because I think it sort of shows you where you can see if something's going up or something's going down. That's the one that I use to review each month. So that's typically the one that I, I will be reviewing with the Board each month. So if you look just quickly on the, the back page of it, you'll see that on the bottom right-hand corner, down at the bottom, it says percent used. So that means of the budget this year, we've spent so far through the month of December, forty point five percent of the budget. So you say, okay, well, is, does that make any sense? The fiscal year is fifty percent through, right? July through December, the school year is forty percent through. So typically, that percentage is going to be in between those two numbers, which it is. It's down on the lower side, which it should be because in the summer, the teachers get paid through the summer, but the summer pay is for the previous year. Okay, so you're always, you always need a few million dollars that won't get paid out into the summer. Okay, um, so I'll just run through this. If you have any questions, let me know, but I'll just do it by, by groupings. You can see the first group is the salaries and wages group. This is obviously the area where most of the money is budgeted in a school district. And so I, I will dig into more detail, just to give you a little more background. I will run through this report, let's say through March, in April, May, June and July, and I'll bring flow to forecast. Okay, and talk about, does it, how are we looking compared to the budget? What's the spend looking like? Do we have any lines that we may have some issues with? So when we get there, but for now, I'm pretty much reporting on where we are. We're halfway through, so if there are some significant issues, I'd see them by now. Though there could still be some things that, you know, there are some things I'm keeping my eye on. But the first couple of the wages, full-time and wages, part-time, typically you can take a look at the numbers. You see September, six point nine, October, seven one, November, seven three, and December, seven one, if you round it. So there's one that's a little bit higher. Why is that? Because that month had five weekly payrolls and two bi-weekly payrolls, but the others had, had two and four. So that makes sense, why that month is slightly higher. Overtime, I keep track of it by school. Most of the overtime in the district comes through the Maintenance Department and the Plan Ops Browns Department. Snow plowing, for example, we, this time of year, we'll do B D basketball. So we pay the custodians in overtime because we need someone near the game. And there's, there's other, other overtime. But for the most part, we've been keeping the budget pretty close to about three hundred thousand a year in overtime. Wages temporary seasonal, that is typically related to summer help. And if a, typically, it's also the custodians that occasionally, if they're down a person, they'll bring in a temp. As you can see, we've had some money in the summer and we haven't had much since because there's no one in that bed, excuse me, that area now. Wages per diem, what that is, is that's where you have the teachers, paras subbing for teachers, if a teacher's out and they use a para to cover that, you pay the para an extra dollar amount. That's in there. It's also some substitute teachers that are filling in for a teacher that may be out for a couple of months or something. That's, that's what that line typically is. Uh, wages collected officials, that's the payment to the Board, uh, which is nine thousand quarter. Longevity, that is a payment in each one of the contracts. The, most of them are paid in January. Paid four of the seven unions. There's three more that will be paid with the first pay in February. So those amounts will, you'll see next month, you'll see probably the largest of that next month, and you'll see some in February. But that's, that's it. It'll be just a one-time payment. Which the, and the, the dollar amounts are all explained in the contracts. Additional hours, that's when teachers do work outside of the contract. Let's say for thirty-five dollars an hour, if they're asked to go and do something, something additional. It's also where it's about nine to ten thousand a month, where we pay the, um, there's a set of music teachers, some, some are actual music teachers that work for us and some are teachers that, music teachers that work elsewhere, but we pay them, that's about nine thousand of that a month. Stipends, typically that's head teachers, is about eight to ten thousand a month for head teachers. And what the, this number is much higher this month, you can see it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand. The coaches at the two high schools for all the fall, fall sports were paid. So that's, that's what that significant increase was. Retirement and separation pay, typically you see the bigger numbers in August and September. Those are people that are receiving, um, um, some sort of payment as part of their contract. A typical teacher, let's say, that leaves over a hundred days sick time and they retire, they need a payment of approximately thirty thousand dollars. So it depends on, that's assuming they have accumulated sick time of that. So that's typically paid out before they start collecting their pension. We'll see costs there through the year though, just if anybody leaves that has accrued vacation time, you're required to pay the accrued vacation time when you leave. That's, that's a state, that might be a federal law too. And then just so you know, that next one, reductions in attrition, you'll notice it's a minus number. So when we do the budget each year, we know that, we, we put the staffing together around this time of year based on the staff that exists right now. People, some of those people are going to leave and other people are going to get, come in and take their place. So let's say you have an experienced teacher like Mr. Claffey making eighty thousand dollars who leaves. And you bring in a new teacher, let's say making fifty thousand dollars, then you've got this thirty thousand dollar savings, so to speak. So we call that attrition, we estimate it, don't truly know what it's going to be because we have no idea who's going to leave. We do know typically by February first, which teachers are leaving. Because if they want to get their severance, they have to give us a letter by February first. So that's how we estimate what the number is. As far as anybody else leaving the district unless they've informed us, we don't know that. So typically, it's a conservative number. The savings should, should be more than that. Now, there's a possibility that someone could retire making sixty and you bring in someone making eighty. Could go the other way, which happens sometimes, but most of the time, it's the other way around. Okay, so that's, that's all the salaries and benefits. Then there's the fringe benefits. The fringe benefits are, are FICA pension and all the medical and life and all those benefits. Those numbers are in our operating budget, as you can see, but those are, are, are generated by the city when they put the number in our dis, so when you approve the budget for the school district this year, it won't have those numbers in it. You'll approve it without those, then it goes to the Alderman. They'll, well, it goes, it goes then to the city, the city adds the budget, adds, adds, excuse me, adds the benefits, which gives us the total budget and then the Alderman approves that. Okay, professional and technical services, um, it's pretty straightforward here. The areas that are, the fourth one down, staffing services, that's that company, E S S, that gets the subs for us. Each, so they've been with us, I think, they started in half a few years, so they've been with us for about two years now. They get started at a difficult time right after COVID when it was hard to find any subs. Hopefully, we're starting to make some traction on that, where they're bringing in more subs. Because I know that's a, for most schools, if you don't have enough subs, it can get kind of crazy at times, especially the elementary schools. Okay, other than that, the last two on the list are sort of the higher numbers, the people support services. Those are those OTPT services that I talked about on that previous contract. And then the contracted services, those are mainly three things there. They're contracted services that, that IT uses, that Plan Op uses. And also, as I mentioned earlier, about the outside service people that we bring in if we don't have a staff member. Special ed, most of it. So for example, in November, it was four hundred and five thousand, about two hundred and eighty of that was, was the special ed services. They didn't all occur in one, in one month, they just got all entered into the system in one month. But that's, that is, um, on page two. The property services, electricity, heating, gas and water. I review that every month, compare it to the previous couple of years. We're actually running a little bit lower than we did last year in all three. Now, that doesn't mean too much in heating gas, in a couple of full months, January and February, it could slip the other way. But at this point, it, it's, it's running fine. The other accounts here are sort of maintenance accounts, which are managed by Mr. Smith. I don't think we've ever really gone over any of those. The way this works too is if you go over one of the lines here, so for example, in this group, if buildings and ground maintenance, if you want to spend more in that line, but you spend less in equipment, repairs and maintenance, then you can still do that. So you might at times see a negative number, but it's made up, as long as it's being up within that fifty-four series, then it's fine. That prevents us from having to do a million different journal entries to match the budget to the expenses. Okay, so that's that. Other services, um, first one is telephone voice. That's part of what we were talking about with Mr. Rodriguez earlier. That's, this is the line we hope to see that savings on. We're not going to see it this year because the phone system won't be in, but hopefully next year, we're going to see a savings on this line. Other than that, a lot of these other things are relatively small, mileage reimbursements, advertising, printing services, not significant spend. And if you take a quick look, you can see there's, you know, there's nothing that looks out of, out of line too much. And then there's a number of tournament fees, game officials' assignment fees, those are all athletic type fees. And then there's, there's a last line that transportation services, that's broken out into what we call regular transportation and special ed transportation. So most of that cost is for a student, but the special ed transportation would include those other smaller companies that provide service for extortion out of district. That's what I was talking about before. Year-to-date spend there is two point eight million. So this is something that for years we were running. Uh, have a better handle on it now. I meet once a month with the Special Ed Department. We look at the roster of all the children. We take a look, did the cost go up? Did the school increase the costs? Are we going to try to stay, are we going to be able to stay within budget? We do have a, an account, a special revenue account, but if this runs over, we could charge some of the costs to there. So we do have a little bit of a, a coverage there. We haven't had to use it the last few years. Because the number, it's kind of interesting, we had about We had about ninety to a hundred students out of district, and then during COVID, it went down to like seventy. So I don't know what happened, but it's starting to get back up. But the cost of each, the cost per student has gone way up, but the number of students has gone down. So the total line hasn't been really affected that much. But it's something that over the years, you have to keep a good eye on that account. Okay, uh, supplies and materials, pretty much what it is. It's mostly the first five or six lines with the the uh school spending. We give each school an allocation and they spend their allocation, they don't spend anything over that, they're unable to. And in the middle, there's all the electrical plumbing, et cetera, those are the supplies for plant operations. And then towards the end, those sort of periodicals, book subscriptions, things like that are typically done at the at the curriculum office for a little. Okay, indirect cost allocation, you can see that's a negative number. Basically, what that is, it's a revenue in a sense, so it shows up as a negative number in here. That is um from our grants. We have an overhead rate, so for for every dollar we spend, we get two point five percent back as a as a credit, which reduces our operating budget. We don't have to do that, it's typically what we do. If we have a grant that's very tight, let's say we got a grant for a hundred thousand and needed all of that just to provide the surface or whatever, then we wouldn't charge this, this wouldn't come back. But it does come back typically on the Title One grant, the N D E A grant, and all those, all the federal grants. It's fairly common. And then there's the section on the uh various types of uh equipment, mostly computer equipment. Uh, see the spends on the computer equipment, computer software. Most of that is in July and August, because that's when we renew our softwares, that's when we buy most of the equipment. Um, and uh, so debt service, we have two leases basically. We have a lease on the copiers and we have uh that energy savings lease that I talked about um in the previous. So those are those two leases, they're paid for this year, there'll be no other costs on that line for the rest. Um, and expense transfers to other funds, those are two, that's a negative number also. Those are two things, facility rentals, we rent out our facilities to outside people, they'll pay a fee, that's where these funds go. And we also have fees we charge to our athletes to play sports, a certain amount per sport, that could be those here also. Um, so that is the report. You know, as we go forward, I was probably a little more detailed this time, I can wait the next time, maybe, but um that's the monthly, Neil would like that.
Um, do you guys have any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you for going through all that because um, looking at it before, I was wondering what all those different things were and the way that you explained it, so it was it was very good. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I I haven't been here for a year, so it helped me too.
Yeah, no, like I said, if these items, when you look, take a look at it and feel free, I have questions on it. I review it every month. Typically, I review it and try to say, okay, what might somebody ask? And I pretty cut at it, every once in a while, you might ask a question, and I'll have to get back to it, but I mean, sometimes that happens, but.
Okay. All right, so um, if there's no more questions, we don't need a motion for that one. So we're on to the last um, the last item. It's the fiscal year twenty four December transfer report.
Okay, so what what this is, is these are transfers, these are budget transfers. So the budget is approved, and if somebody decides they want to spend money in another line, then they've budgeted for, they have to do a budget transfer. Um, so if the schools, for example, put a lot of money into a supply account and then decide, I don't wanna use it for supplies, I wanna buy a projector. If they didn't budget it right, they can't do that, because the system won't allow them to make a purchase if they don't have enough budget in there. So they'll do a transfer where they'll take it out of the supply account, move it into the equipment account, and then they can go and make the purchase, it'll go through the the process. So the way it works per policy is any transfer over a thousand dollars needs to be shared with the board each month. If there's a transfer within these that's over five thousand, then you need to approve it. But that's one of the fiscal policies. So I just run through them quickly. Um, first one is for Amherst Street, sort of an example of what I just said, they wanted to buy a projector. So the six one one three five account they're taking it from, that's a supply account, and they're putting it into excuse me, equipment account. Uh, the next one is National High School North, basically doing the same thing. They're buying a couple of projectors and they've taken it out of the supply account. Uh, next one is Penachuk School. Um, this is a, I I honestly don't know what Dreambox software is, but it's a software being used at the school. Um, and they're taking it from their uh, it's like they might have done it the wrong. Um, so they're they're taking it from supplies for the software. And just, we give each school an allocation. The the elementary schools get between thirty and forty thousand dollars to be used for supplies and that sort of stuff. I don't micromanage that, you know, like the principals in the school, teachers, et cetera, they decide what they're gonna spend their thirty or forty thousand dollars on. Um, as long as it's something that's fine to spend it, I can't go out to dinner with. But if they gotta, if they gotta buy, some schools might buy a lot of equipment, some might buy more supplies. I don't feel it's important for me or anyone in the central office to overanalyze that. So when they do their budgets, sometimes they do a good job of what they're gonna spend the money on. Sometimes they change their minds, so there's more of these entries. Um, the next one is a district-wide, um, this was an entry that I did. We've been having more costs lately associated with five oh four. So there's special education and then there's five oh four. Special education has federal funding, grant funding, it has very specific funding that you can, you can use it for certain things. Five oh four, up until this year, we didn't have any funding for five oh four. But what happened was there was a student who was a special ed student, who then is no longer a special ed student, but still has a nurse. So we couldn't use the grants to pay for it anymore. And I had to find some money to pay for the student's nurse in the operating budget. So that's what this entry is. I took it out of a labor account where we didn't hire someone, and then I put it down into this uh contracted service because we have to pay for this nurse. But the five oh four cost, this is a significant one. Most people that have a one-on-one nurse have an I E P, this is this is highly irregular. But the five oh four costs are increasing, um, where people are saying, I need someone to come in and do a test or a service of some sort. So it's starting, that's starting to pile up more so in this year's budget. I just added in lines, we'll probably have a line for it, it'll be an S, because we don't have a lot of history on it. But it is sort of a cost that we're starting to to see that we didn't really see before. Um, and that is it. You like, these come sort of fast and furious on April and May, people are doing their spend downs.
So I wanna make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty four December transfer report.
I can add motion.
And um, so I'm a yes, uh, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Daniels Williams?
Yes.
Okay, and so that passes. And um, I'm gonna make a mo- motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
So let's see. I'm a yes, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so um, we're adjourned at seven oh, seven oh six P M. Thank you.